Like to call the November fifteenth Scotland County Planning Zone Board Meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Like welcome everybody tonight to this meeting. First thing on the agenda is approve the meeting minutes from the prior meeting. I take it everybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes. Do we have any adjustments to the minutes?
I believe that they accepted as distributed.
Have motion to have second?
What second?
Johnson, we got three seconds. All in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Minutes previous meeting approved. We have three orders of business on our agenda tonight. May be a little bit complicated, may not be, we'll have to see. This is a little beyond what we normally encounter with one of our meetings. First on the agenda is a special use application on Mr. Drew Yost for a property in Elmore. Is Mr. Yost here?
No, but I'm Joe, I work there.
Okay, and you're presenting to Mr. Yost. Do you have anything in particular that you'd like to send over to the board for this application? So we're finding that, you know, we're applying for a special use permit, and there are some particulars with the special use permit that I do not see in the application itself. It may just be an oversight, but I also have a question. I was buying that property today, and I see that there are houses already stored on that property, on those houses for rebuild in North Carolina. Alright, my question is, we have not approved rezonations but for special use. Do you have some reason for having already placed those houses there?
I don't, just kind of works through them and they all get property.
And is there some legality about that that we need to take into consideration?
He probably needs to move them, if he doesn't, the board would have any thought of that.
Yeah, there's technically, you have no legal ability to place these houses there. If they're being used for this specific purpose, for rebuild of North Carolina, without our recommending it to the board, County Commissioners, and the Commissioners approving. So you are a little bit ahead of what you really need to be. I'm not sure again if that's an oversight, if there was an assumption on Mr. Yost's part, oh, Mr. Yost, is that Yost?
Yeah.
That has an assumption on his part, but it would be my recommendation that you contact him and recommend to him to stop moving those, and we need to discuss that. Also, since there is some lack of completing the documents for the special use permit, which Ms. McQueen can get you those from our ordinances, I would like to recommend that we table this application until we have free time to address those properties that are on that, and to make sure that the special use permit and all of the required issues involved with that are completed to our ordinances. So I have made a motion that this be tabled until our next regular meeting. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed like sign. This motion is tabled until our next regular meeting. Appreciate you being here, and we will discuss some issues for Ms. McQueen after the meeting and the next episode. Thank you for being here. Second and third items are combined to some degree. I think we have representatives from two solar farms with us to discuss.
That's correct.
Pardon me?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I believe that before we get any further, we need to ask you guys to introduce yourselves and your association with the solar farms.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, would you like us to present both at the same time? Or we have a notebook for each, and I thought we might just very quickly do each solar farm one at a time.
That's certainly fine, I know there's, the documentation is pretty much identical.
It is. It is. May I just hand out the notebooks for each at the same time?
Yeah, if you want to hand out the notebooks for each at the same time, that'd be perfectly fine. And I understand you have a presentation for us?
Yes, and it will not take long, you've heard this many times.
Yes, we have.
We are aware of that.
There'll be a pop quiz at the end.
You're familiar face too. Yes, you am. I see some other familiar faces.
If I may introduce both Cypress Creek and the property owners who are here tonight. There are two solar farms in front of you, one of them's called Laurel Crest, the other one is Scotch Grove Solar. This is not something you're unfamiliar with. Your land use plan that you adopted says Scotland County is for solar. We provide a page from your land use plan that says you are supportive of it and embrace it in your county. Both of these applications are presented by Cypress Creek Renewables, which is the parent company of both Laurel Crest LLC and Scotch Grove Solar LLC. Here for Cypress Creek are Nicole Miller, if I could just go down, Mr. Mike Storch, and Paige Kimber. We also have, and probably the most important person here on the Scotch Grove site is Lee Howell. Lee's family's been here for almost a hundred years, not as long as some families in Scotland County, but a long time. And he's a very widely respected member of the community. And his property is with Scotch Grove Solar. And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll just walk through both of these. They, in each of these notebooks, we give you evidence. And I think Mr. Johnston has explained to y'all many times, this is not a hearing where people can come in and express their opinion. You have legal standards in your zoning ordinance, and you have to have evidence that you meet that. And what we've done is to show you that we meet the standards of the legal standards for quasi judicial hearing. The first thing we have, and it's all by tab, we have the application narrative. You've been presented that already in your materials. The application narrative addresses every single standard that is in your ordinance for special use permit. The last page of each of them comes out of your comp plan. It said among your objectives is to grow solar. The next tab is frequently asked questions about solar. We give you, some people still have questions about it despite the number of times that you've heard about it, but we address those. At the next tab, within each of the notebooks, is the site plan. Sometimes people want to know where the site plan, what the site actually is, and that's why we present that in a large call out. After that, sometimes the most important question is, what are the landscape buffers? And we have the same site plan here with, you'll see the yellow and the green to show where the added buffers are. And in some cases, these buffers actually see what your ordinance requires. The second page is a little diagram of that. Health and safety report, Mr. Sanford is here. Mr. Sanford is an electrical engineer. He spent five decades with Duke, or was it six? It was around five, Chris. He actually has a solar farm on his own property. But Chris has become one of the country's leading consultants in the area of health and safety. He's testified in how many states, Chris, twelve to fifteen states you've been in?
At least.
At least, talking about this issue. We also, at the next tab, a lot of people have misconceptions about solar and think that solar farms can be put in the middle of streams and the middle of wetlands. It's just not true. People think that they cause the rainfall to keep from hitting the ground, that's incorrect. We explain this very clearly in here, that all the clean water act protections are here. We do have something in here on battery storage. At least one of these sites might be a place where Duke Energy wants to have battery systems. The thickest part of this is a study from Kirkland that addresses market impact. It is not debatable. The Kirkland Associates, which actually, just a few miles down the road in Raleigh, have become the nation's number one appraisal firm. They've been in twenty to twenty-one states across the country. They have the greatest collection of data in the country of all from communities just like this on whether or not there is any impact of a solar farm. Of course, the answer is no because, as they explain, all the criteria that are identified by appraisers that would cause something to have a negative impact don't exist with a solar farm. And Nick Kirkland can explain that. We do have something near the last tab on harmony with the area. It's a photo essay. Of course, each of these has a little bit of a different essay. I'm looking at the Laurel Crest notebook. But in this area, they're already, you have a trash depository place right adjacent to the site. We have convenience stores, chicken farms, regional gas pipelines. Three hundred foot cell towers are right adjacent to each of these sites. There are places with heavy equipment. But the point that we make here is that a solar farm is less obtrusive. It's less seen, it will be well concealed, you won't be able to hear it, you won't be able to know it's there. And functionally, it has not a single characteristic about it that would keep somebody in the area from using their property as they see fit. And then the final point, final tab on each of the notebooks is a tab on the decommissioning process. Mr. Chairman, we're glad to take, sort of answer questions on both of them simultaneously if you'd like. But I would like to give Mr. Kirkland about a minute and a half, just to give a brief high level overview. Same with Mr. Sanford.
Hi, my name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a state certified general appraiser in North Carolina and two other states. I've been accepted as an expert in property value impacts for things just like solar farms and many other things before this board and in total hundreds of times. I'm here to just present the impact study, answer any questions you have. The high level is that we've looked at homes that are sold next to solar farms, and they're selling for similar prices as nearby homes that don't adjoin solar farms. It's called a match pair or paired sales analysis. It's a strong indication that being next to the solar farm has no impact on the adjoining property values. To that end, the basis for that, as Tom alluded to, is there's no hazardous materials or traffic or noise associated with things like a solar farm. The only possible concern is related to looking at it and the appearance, and that's why they have, for both of these projects, put in significant setbacks and vegetative buffers in order to mitigate any concerns on that front. So the conclusion is, from the impact study, there would be no impact on adjoining property values if the Laurel Crest or the Scotch Grove Solar are developed as proposed. I'm happy to answer any questions, I know it's a big document and going into more detail.
Yeah, it is a big document, and I was privy to these documents a little bit before the rest of the board members, and I had the time to do a little bit of research, and I can't disagree with what you said, but in reading the general consensus and what I have found is that there is a slight negative reduction in property values, depending on the studies that you read. And I get printing on my, I was in a hurry, anywhere from one and a half to 2.3%.
We actually address a number of university studies in there. If there's anything in particular that you would like me to discuss, I'd be happy to discuss those now. There's a number of them out there, and the easiest way to explain it is the real estate market is an imperfect market. You go to Walmart, it's going to be a dollar fifty for a soda. The next person can go buy a very same soda, a dollar fifty. If you have, for example, a neighborhood with similar homes on similar sized lots, same floor plan, they're not going to all sell for the same price. They will be really, really similar, normally about plus or minus 5% because this person wants a corner lot, this person would never want a corner lot, this one just likes that this one was this slate gray, this one likes charcoal. The truth of it is, real estate is imperfect, there's some variation in sales prices. And there is strong indication for a plus or minus of 5% being no impact. In actuality, our match pair data, we have ninety plus examples. They come in at a positive 1% for adjoining property values, meaning on paper, it would look like a small positive for homes to be next to a solar farm. But the truth of it is, just like a study saying possibly negative one or two, it actually is a good indication of no impact either way because it would be indistinguishable from normal market friction, is how an appraiser would call it.
Would those studies show that little increase in property because it's a plus to have that versus some other operation that may be a negative, like a hog farm or a big commercial manufacturing facility?
I mean, while there is definitely the ability for something else to contribute a negative, whereas being next to a solar farm is a neutral.
Right.
That's actually measuring the impact of something else on a home compared to the solar farm. When we're looking at solar farms or homes next to solar farms to compare, we take as many times as possible the home that's directly next to the solar farm. We take three nearby homes from the same subdivision that don't back up to anything other than houses, and that's it, because we want it to be a true comparison on, the only difference is this one's next to a solar farm. If something is next to, say, an interstate or a hog farm or a poultry farm, we wouldn't use that because that data could manipulate that. So a study coming in at a negative 1%, it's hard to know exactly what the data they looked at. If there's a specific study, I'm happy to address that. There's a number of studies out there, and they have different variabilities on, if you read the abstract, it says, hey, there could be an impact. But when you actually read what it says, it says only in downtown areas such as Rhode Island and Massachusetts, whereas in a rural area, we would find no impact. A lot of the information online, you have to read the papers themselves, which are not always public access. You have to pay to read them and understand, and it is a problem with how the research is presented. But again, if there's any specific studies you'd like me to address, or if you'd like, I can grab the report and go through one of those page by page and just kind of like hit the highlights on each of those university studies. Whatever you would like, I'd be happy to do.
No, I don't think we need to do that, and, but I can appreciate your point of site specific studies. Our house is, well, our house is sitting on eight acres of land, and there's no other property like our house on eight acres of land. When we get a refinance on our house, they had to go to Southern Pines High Nurse, from horse country to find something similar. Well, I certainly didn't want my house praised, or kind of appraised by them, but the site specific appraisal, that's what they had to do.
That's what we're providing, we're providing something that's site specific with the most local data possible. We don't actually have anything from Scotland County, it's not from Lack of Try. But trying to find a home sale next to any given piece of ag land is a challenge. And 2021 and 2022, there was a lot of other market factors that made sales tricky to analyze. But regardless, instead of it being a national study looking at things from, you know, fifteen states, we're talking about stuff that we might have data, we do have data from fifteen states. But the data within the impact study that draws the conclusion that neither of these would have any impact to be joining property values is based on local data from this area, not from Kentucky or Texas or anything like that.
What do you call them, local?
This is, we look at, I think the closest ones that we have are, there's two from Cumberland County. We have some in Harnett County, Wayne County. I can grab the thing, go through the list if you'd like, but we've looked for as many as we can find in the area, and then we stair step out by county just from that point. The challenge being, if you take any piece of farmland and is there a house that's sold next to it in the last two to three years we can compare, there's just not always a house to compare to. And we're also limited by the aerial imagery and the GIS systems as well. I mean, if the sale hasn't been identified, our hands are a bit tied at the moment. But it is something that, when we are doing these, we go and look for the most local data we can find because obviously you as a board want to know what's actually happening in your county, regardless of what a national study would say.
Let me add, the last thing you want us to worry to tell you what the law is, but your ordinance says substantial injury, number one. Number two, if anybody disagrees in opposition, that the statute say 160D-1402 says they have to come up with an appraisal by an appraiser to meet the standards. But the other thing I would point out is that there, if you look at the opening page or two in the Kirkland study, they're very careful to say that all of the standards, the methodology that's used meets all of the criteria required of them by the Appraisal Institute and the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice. So, and then, then using that professional criteria, they're able to seal these studies.
That is correct.
Yeah, and what I said, it wasn't disputing what you said, it's just my personal research. But you're the professional in the area, you've done this for a lot of the good for, I don't know how many farms.
Hundreds, so many hundreds.
You've been in Robinson County?
We have, yes sir.
How did their comparison to us reflect? Because Cumberland's very populated, Robinson's probably next closest similar to us.
I'll tell you, when we are looking at these, out of the, I think ninety plus examples, there are less than 1% that show anything beyond a negative 5% of damage. But when looking at them as a whole, like all ninety plus examples, they show overwhelmingly no impact. And there is one, I believe, I don't remember exactly what part of North Carolina it's from, that shows a mile negative, but there are more examples above 5% indicating a positive impact than there are any negative. The vast majority of the data is strongly that there is no impact, and we pulled data from Robinson County. We have, despite the fact we don't have match pairs from Scotland County, we have written up and actively looked at and looked at all the adjoining uses and homes next to all the solar farms in Scotland County. So we've done a lot of legwork on this, but we need people to actually go buy and sell homes.
Robinson County just approved a solar farm slightly larger than this just last month, and using and approving a study that they did.
I was that participant in that one, also.
See, we're fortunate in the sense that Robinson, Scotland, and Richmond still have a lot of vacant agricultural land, and us and Robinson are awfully flat, so it would minimize a lot of grading and such. And it just concerns me that, that we're kind of easy. We're, because of the contoured land, the population of the people, our economic development, our, we just hadn't really experienced a whole lot of these, you know? And it just seems like they're more on the horizon, and I think we need to be, we just need to look at all aspects and be concerned and make sure we make the right decision. But I just see some weak points in Scotland County that kind of opens the door for situations like this that make it really easy for.
If there's any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, if not, I'll pass it off to Chris.
Thank you. Chris Handifer, I've been here before, I'm an engineer. I don't have quite a hundred years, but maybe getting close of experience. And this is very similar to all the projects you already have in Scotland County already. There's already eight thousand megawatts connected in North Carolina. If you remember last December when the Duke started tweaking back on the voltage and tweaking back because the solar's what kept it on, that eight thousand megawatts was online when the gas started failing. We've been through hurricanes, tornadoes, fires, floods. We've, it's, we've got a lot of experience in North Carolina, no negative impact, help and safety to any residents. The technology we use is tried and true, it's been around a long time, fifty years plus, or some for probably the youngest component, and some are much older than that. So I'd just say without, you know, any kind of qualification, hesitation, that this project is a plan with not materially endangered health and safety to anybody in Scotland County. And be glad to answer any questions, I hear what you said, I put a number in there. I think it's less than 2% if these projects get approved, be less than 2% of the total land in. And there is a cap, and the cap is when those lines are full.
Right.
And whether you fill them up in this county or the next county, these lines go, you know, sometimes a hundred miles, so they may cross five counties, but when they're full, regardless of which county attaches to them, they're done. They're not putting anymore, they're not going to overload those lines with generators. So it's not just like, okay, we just keep going and going and going and going when the lines are full. I live in that county, we proved thirty-seven, there's not a line left. And we're still less than 2% of the land.
So when y'all get to this point, has Duke Energy already approved the site?
No.
Or accepted, so you've still got to be accepted by Duke Energy.
This is just opening the gate, they have to conform with all the DOT, the Department of Environmental Quality, the Corps sometimes.
Basically saying we have a site that meets the requirements and ready to go if y'all choose it.
We hope, yes, we're hoping that that Duke would, it's on RFP type thing, they're bidding, and so they have to have a price that's competitive, and if, you know, it gets them started.
Sorry, and just to add a little bit of context, we can speak as developers too, to just help you understand why we've chosen these sites, why they're good for solar, and what we've done to work with the community. But to your point, I think roughly one in five projects in the board. So you may ask yourself, do we need to, right? We're coming forward with you for two sites tonight. I think the likelihood that both are chosen this year is not very high, but we want to make sure that Duke has options, and we do feel strongly that we can partner well with Scotland County. And so we wanted to put both of our eggs in the basket, if you will, to increase the probability that at least there would be one. Yeah, it's about one in five chance once we're actually in the RFP, just because there are so many facilities across the state.
In South Carolina.
In South Carolina. But yeah, after Chris talks, Mike can talk too about, you know, how it would work with the neighbors and concessions and all that.
And so many times we look at these, I can understand why they're appealing to people. And I guess I'm having to learn a little more about it than I do yesterday, so. In twenty years, isn't that usually the common contract time? In twenty years, you got this facility here, which you can opt to if they choose to renew it and so on. What is Duke Energy going to do when you have all these solar fields? And say what if a large percentage of landowners decide that they don't want it anymore? And they take it away, what is Duke Energy going to do then for their demands of supply?
Well.
I mean, is that something that's ever discussed?
They offer an incentive, because when I signed mine, we signed twenty year agreements. And that was, the first one was 2015, they came up with a large check for our family in 2020 for another five years, and I'm expecting in 25 to be the same thing. They are incent, they want to keep it.
Well, the population is only going to probably grow, so the man shouldn't get more than what it is today in twenty years. And I just, I was just curious to see what the end game is here.
Yeah, so that's a great question, and whenever we're talking to our landowners, we're talking about potentially up to forty years. And whenever we're talking to our landowners, we're talking about potentially up to forty years. So they're signing on potential twenty years, but they have the option, they understand that we have the option to renew. So in our leases, if we wanted to go full forty years, we could. I will say that Duke is looking at a lot of nuclear reactors, they're looking at essentially taking smaller nuclear sites and placing them throughout the state of North Carolina. That is one of the ways that they're trying to, to meet demand in addition to a number of other ways.
Yeah, I think their biggest one right now is offshore wind.
Yeah, I do.
They have a tremendous investment. This, when they sell their kilowatt hours, it's like, you know, a third of what you're paying at the meter for this building. Okay, that's, but, but the rates are going to go up when they go offshore. I mean, it is tremendous amount of capital investment for, for that offshore. So I don't know if that'll come to fruition, but that's where they're headed. So that's what, I mean, I don't say it's going to replace solar because solar and wind go together. And a lot of times when the wind's not blowing, that's when the solar's available, when the, when the, it's, they work together. Plus the storage to kind of, you know, smooth those gaps out. But for the health and safety, there, there's not going to be any impact. And that, I just want to make sure you guys understand, there's, there's nothing there that could hurt you.
Well, I tell you, every, every type of new energy that you find, there's the pros and the cons. You got those that are totally against it and those that are totally for it. For solar, you talk about carbon offset for clearing the land that's got to be cleared. And how's that compared to the amount of energy? What's the cost of recycling at the end of the term? Is there going to be an escrow fund set for that? Yeah, you, you read, well, people like me, I read a lot about this stuff. And I'm, I looked at having solar put on my farm until we sold the farm. And it stayed in farmland, I mean, it's, it's heritage land and we kept it in the family. And not saying for or against anything here, the more information we can get, the better we're able. And, and one thing I've got to do when opening a meeting, our charge is to protect the health, safety and wellbeing of the citizens of Scotland County. I mean, that's, that's in the charter. And so we have to look at all of those things. And some questions that I had, the, the Laurel Crest project looks a little less divisive than, than Lee's project. My phone has been ringing off the hook for three or four weeks, once this came out.
That's why we got to cover all our bases, look at everything.
To be honest with you, I'm surprised we don't have any more folks here tonight. With the number of calls that I've had, half the people in my church are live right around those properties. And my Sundays have gotten a lot longer at church.
I bet they do. You're working harder than preaching.
Yeah.
Well, if you want to compare it to farmland, I would just say that if you're going to grow corn and soybeans and you're going to turn it into ethanol and burn it in a fuel tank. And that's what we do with about a third of the crops that we grow. The row crops for, for, for grain. These farms are sixty times more efficient than that. If you, it actually takes energy to make the alcohol, you have to distill it. I mean, it takes a tremendous amount of energy. So if you're growing that energy, if you just do a flat, what does it cost? How many times you have to run a track right there? How many times you have to haul the grain to the, and process? But if you just do the total cost, this amount, of course, there's some inefficiencies in the electrical system too. But it's like ninety-four, five, six percent efficient depending on how far we have to truck it. Whereas, um, uh, if you're burning fuel like that, I'm just saying, if you, if you're looking and thinking about, well, how many, how many acres of farms I need to save? This like, every acre of panels would save sixty acres of corn if you're just going to use. Now, you can't eat this, I understand that. You're not going to eat any of this electric energy that comes out of it. But if you're going to just make corn just to, just to burn it in a tank, this is far superior, far superior.
You have to run up a really great point about, again, why these sites, so you mentioned tree clearing. I believe neither of these sites are clearing any trees. But if they are, the way that we have it is that we do two to one replacements. So if we clear an acre of trees, we invest in another two acres of replacement in the area. So we've worked in the past with land conservatory funds to make sure that that's something that, that is local because we realize that that's a real issue. Your other point about decommissioning, I think, you know, Scotland County has a decommissioning bond. I think it's actually one of the, the highest decommissioning bonds that I've personally seen. And so that's something that goes into place, I believe what you said, at the time of construction. And that is, once we put that into place, that's in place for the lifetime of facility. It's something that should our company, all of us, run away, go bankrupt, whatever, y'all are still covered. Landowners are still covered. Additionally, there's also a bill at the State House that was just passed that has a similar provision. And in our leases, we commit to decommission. So these are, these are items that I think have come up before and rightfully so. No one wants to be left with a pile of panels in their, in their county. And so we're, we're putting forward a significant amount financially to make sure that that does.
How are y'all judging what that decommission cost would be in twenty years from now or forty? I mean, if you say, I saw in one of the documents, it's ten thousand dollars, is that going to be sufficient in twenty years?
Ten thousand dollars an acre right now.
Yep, right.
So that's, I think, for our sites, it's up to eight million dollars, which is more than sufficient. In the last part of your binder, we have a decommissioning estimate.
Okay.
Um, most of that, I, I think you can read through about how they, how they level out. But I do believe they put in some sort of inflation adjustment to account for what we think neighborhood prices are going to be. While we think that the prices are going to be in twenty, twenty, forty.
What is it roughly today, do you estimate?
I, I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head, you'd have to, as far as what is the decommissioning cost?
Yeah, on average, that you would think.
It depends. So on our Scotch Grove site, I think it's about six and a half million. Um, on our Laurel Crest site, so as you'll notice.
What's that equate to acre, count on the calculator?
Less than, I, I can't do that math in my head, I don't know.
I didn't have to get any, but.
I think it's like, it's something like maybe, that one's more expensive because if we do, if Duke does elect to have a battery storage system on it, then it is more expensive to, to take that out. So I think that one comes out to maybe six thousand dollars an acre. Laurel Crest, on the other hand, that's about four hundred acres, I want to say it came out to like a million dollars.
In terms of like total energy cost, it's like, it would be four point six million if you didn't include salvage value of any of the steel racking, the collapse from the panels, materials of the panels.
What they doing down the ground, is it removed as well?
Yeah, yeah. The only thing that's left is potentially a substation that, that Duke would own. Um, because we have a substation that we build ourselves that connects to their substation and then connects to their transmission lines.
Right. The battery, uh, storage, is there a facility already, already in Latin Scotland County?
None.
Does it, a building, does it look like one of these substations? I mean, what, what?
It looks like a building.
About what size would it be roughly?
Well, they can put in modules like the size of this room and they would have like multiple buildings. So a, a room this size would probably be like a megawatt. Maybe, maybe megawatt and a half that would fit in, in this room. And it also depends on the technology they, they have chosen. I don't think they have chosen the technology, I'm, I'm thinking like Lithium Ion would be like that. But there are some technologies that, um, that are larger for the same, have a larger footprint for the same megawatt.
Yeah.
But they may, they may be cheaper, uh, and they may be more reliable, uh, uh, the operation cost could be less. So, uh, I don't know, I think that's probably a little premature to, to spec what kind of storage.
So that would be something Duke might require, not something y'all plan on, is that what you're saying?
Sure.
That might be something that Duke requires versus what you're planning on.
Probably eventually, but right now they take a certain percentage with storage and a certain percentage without storage, is that right?
If we may, yeah.
So.
Mike is actually the project developer, Chris again is the health and safety expert, so he knows a lot, but Mike really knows specifics of the site that you want to.
But, but Mike, why don't you get up and talk about that and especially Scotch Grove and.
All right, so there's a couple of site plans here that are larger than the ones that you guys have currently.
I was hoping you were going to have it up on the screen.
Oh, sorry, I mean, we can have it. These are, this is for Scotch Grove Solar, um, outlining adjacent parcels. Um, this is for Laurel Crest Solar as well. Outlining the location of panels throughout the site, probably just passing them around as well. But, so both of these sites, so Laurel Crest is a solar only facility. Um, Scotch Grove, um, was bid into the Duke RFP, um, this past September as a, um, solar only and a solar plus storage that's required by Duke if you're considering having storage. Um, and this is the first RFP of Duke's cycle of procurement that looks at, um, having solar in solar plus storage facilities. Um, and it's completely up to them about which one they choose, um, based off of site characteristics, location. It has to do with transmission and reliability because storage does offer an opportunity to make the system electric grid more reliable in which it's located. This one is, uh, Laurel Crest as well. So the, the site plan for Scotch Grove that has a battery energy storage facility, um, there's a site plan with it in and a site plan with it out. The one that you're seeing right now has it in, um, and it's up to the Duke to decide which one they would like to select, um, at the end of the day.
Does Duke give y'all any idea of what your probable chances are earlier on? Like, do they have interest in this one over other ones for any reason or something?
Um, it's, so they have their, for the RFP, they have a rubric that they're supposed to look at holistically. They have a third party that goes through all of the bids that are submitted to them from developers across the country, internationally. Um, they're supposed to holistically rate what the criteria are that are set out by the NCUC, North Carolina Utilities Commission, um, and in Duke Energy. One of the primary factors is cost, um, and there are many factors that go into that cost, specifically engineering, during construction costs. So depending on the type of site that you have, um, if you have a flat, clear site, um, it's going to, there's no timbering involved. It's going to be cheaper than a site that has vertical slopes, lots of trees. If there is, the sites are fragmented, then you'll have to run more electrical wiring, um, have more spacing between equipment. Um, that can also have higher costs. And so that can sometimes determine which projects, um, have a higher, uh, cost at the end of the day. Um, there are some other things that are in the rubric, um, but from like a, just a holistic Duke RFP perspective and looking at the most competitive projects, they're looking for the lowest project, uh, cost. Uh, now there is also a, a two-fold process in this, that it's not just valuing the projects based off of, on cost. It's also how does the system fit into their grid, um, the electric grid, transmission lines, distribution lines? How does it all factor together? And so they have to do a, they're just doing right now cluster study process where they look at multiple projects that are being proposed all across North Carolina and South Carolina to be able to evaluate the impacts on their system. And if there are any, um, issues with those, um, development of those projects, then they'll be identified and there might have to be upgrades to lines, um, or new substations built or in, in rare cases, entire new transmission lines. Um, so that, that happens in concurrence with this, but.
Once the variables have been settled on this, when do y'all estimate Duke will notify if y'all are one that's chosen or not?
Right, so the, so we get like a first glimpse, right now we don't know. It's, it's just they're looking at what they want and come January, come towards the end of January, they give an initial listing of a number of projects that they're interested in studying further. Um, and then once that, so basically a large bucket right now that have all been submitted, it's about upwards of fifty projects across North Carolina, South Carolina, around like six thousand megawatts in total. Then come January, they'll knock out, make a smaller bucket. Um, and then come, um, next May, they'll have chosen which projects that they want to award based off of all of the criteria that go into it. And then once those, the contracts are presented to developers, they will then decide, um, the developer will decide if they want to sign the contract. And then once that, that's a power purchase agreement that says they'll, for twenty-five years, they'll pay for the electricity. Now, another thing I'll note is that forty-five percent of the projects are of that PPI variety, whereas fifty-five percent Duke will take those over. So that also has to deal with, um, the, the track, quote unquote, which a project can be bid into. And so that also determines the, which ones they select as well.
You're saying the vehicle take it over, you mean they buy it as opposed to leasing it or?
So i- it's called an asset transfer, so essentially we would, you, 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 yeah, they'd buy the project, um, for a fee, for a development fee. And then they continue to, to build the pro, uh, the project. And there's a number of ways that an asset transfer can go into, but that's generally the sense is that if, for, for example, if one of our projects got selected and Laurel Crest is the one that is on a PPA track, um, Scotch Grove is too, but it's also on the asset transfer track. The PPA track, we would, we would own and operate and develop the project ourselves. Whereas if it was a, uh, asset transfer track, once they said, hey, we want this project, they would pay for it and then it would become theirs and then they would develop it further. And so after like that initial, after the contracts would be all signed in May and June, there's still this, the interconnection study process that is going on in the background. Um, and that's, they're still trying to figure out if the system, if this, if these sites all across the country or across the states, North Carolina, South Carolina, will be able to be effective and have a reliable grid. So it could fall out even, even later than that.
Mike, just while the site plans are out, would you describe the changes you made on the Scotch Grove plan after the neighborhood meeting and how that went?
Yeah, of course. So a lot of times when we go into communities, we look to garner feedback from, um, the neighbors of the immediate project. Um, and so on October twenty-third, we held a community meeting at Laurel Hill Community Center. Brooke McQueen was in attendance. On, on the day, we only had about one member or neighbor, Mr. Darren Ward, show up, um, to discuss Laurel Crest location in relation to his property. And since then, we have been, um, working with him to address his concerns and we've been helping to try to facilitate some type of negotiations. And Mr. Futro, who's the landowner for Laurel Crest Solar, to be able to maybe, if, if this solar project was eventually built, uh, maybe sell a couple of acres behind the property so they could have a larger buffer behind it and own the land itself. Um, that's for Laurel Crest Solar, again, he was the only neighbor that showed up, um, to that meeting that we had. Now, on November second, they, we had a, a, a meeting at Laurel Hill Community Center again. And this time invited neighbors to, uh, Scotch Grove Solar, which are outlined on, I believe, that project, that site plan. It has all the names of the adjacent parcels. And some of them are tiny and you can't infit all of them, I think I sent that over ninety mailers, um, to adjacent neighbors. But on the day, about a dozen residents came by and spoke to us, um, as well as, uh, Mr. Lee How, Phil Floyd, Chris Hanifer was also there. Um, there is a, a number of residents along Monroe Road, which is on the northwest portion of the site, um, on the top of there. And so what these site plans show that the application and the bundles don't show is that since then, we've worked with them to be able to, um, push back the property line setbacks instead of being twenty feet to two hundred feet setbacks, um, which has reduced about fifteen acres from the, the site plan. And those are all identified, um, on that site plan and the other site plan that is probably.
That's not necessarily in that, right?
No, it's not in that, it's not in that. And, and all the drawings that we have here will be stamped and, and resubmitted, um, as well.
So.
So these are, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to clarify what you said, so some of those residents on Monroe Road, y'all have pushed the, uh, buffer?
The setbacks, so.
It's ten times, ten times what the counter requires, why?
I, I, did you say two hundred feet?
Two hundred. Two hundred foot setbacks, yeah, so it was twenty feet to two hundred feet and then we'll still have the ten foot, um, vegetative buffer.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the, the vegetative buffer will still be up against the fence. And I have the vegetative landscaping plans outlined here as well that I can, I can break out and show you exactly how thick the buffers will be, what type of plantings will be, um, where they'll be planted. Cause, um, there, we have three different types of buffer plans. One is extremely thick, that has basically trees that are going to be planted about this wide, um, about this tall, five to eight feet. And they'll be stacked in rows of two in the back, one in the front, and then there'll be trees spaced out. I might, I want to break those out as well, just so you guys can understand. But we have outlined where those would be planted, um, along, specifically for Scotch Grove Road, it'll be a long round residential residences, so on top of that two hundred foot setback and that area in between, there will be.
Do you have a map?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah, I'm going to break it all out here.
I mean, the actual world that y'all considering two hundred feet for a buffer.
And please inform that, correct it if I'm wrong, like the top was, you did a fifteen acre reduction of panels up there along the road, so about fifteen acres, it was originally there.
Row, is that what you're saying? You're pushing, pushing it back some more from the town road?
If you see, so right here, so this is, Monroe Road is right here, on the northwest portion of the site at Scotch Grove. Okay. So Monroe Road is right here. And what we've done is instead of having a 20-foot setback, which you can't really see because of the line thickness, we've pushed back it 200 feet inward towards the project. So now that there's no panels here, there's no panels here, and there's no panels here.
Is that orange, the 250-foot buffer?
The, the orange is, the, this is for the, the vegetative landscaping plan. So that vegetative, that orange outline refers to what you see down here.
Okay.
In terms of the plantings, I was talking about the multiple bushes and.
Right.
Appreciate it. So the orange buffer, the orange lining around here and down Scotch Grove Road over here in, in 1551, the orange here is what you see. It'll be these double bushes with the single bush in front and then larger trees that in full maturity could be anywhere from 45 to 60 feet tall and have much, much larger spread. And that's detailed in this plan, the schedule right here. And this, this is the green that you see here. And then the blue or like purplish color is the smaller one, which we have very little of on Scotch Grove. Laurel Crest, if you have questions anymore about Scotch Grove.
Well, the biggest thing is, I mean, definitely buffers, I think, does please neighbors a lot more than 10-foot or so long. Is it just around those couple residential houses? I mean, are you doing that as well on 501 or just around those residents, right?
So there, there, those residents along Monroe Road, there was a couple of them that came together, they were.
Requested it.
Yeah, they, they requested some separation, some further separation.
Haven't spoken to them since you told them to do it for them?
Yeah.
I went and met with them. I went door to door. I talked to Dean Park, talked to Stutz, with mine saw the Bucklers.
They seemed happy.
And saw Miss Taylor and talked with them and told them we're gonna move it back 200 foot from the Fellers Point. And the tree line that the Clarks and the Stuts and the field in front of them, you is going to stay a field and going to stay the trees that are there. So they were very happy and receptive and appreciative. Well, good. And Miss Taylor, I thought would come by and look at the map, she didn't come by the office and do it, but you know, you know, but she appreciated the effort of moving it back 200 foot, you know, there's a field in between her house and the proposed site that David has.
Right.
And it's gonna be 200 feet from that. And she's expressed interest in buying, you know, if it goes through, kind of like Darren Ward has with Philip, that piece in between David and the thing, that's what, let's see if it all gets done, we'll be glad to talk when that happens.
I'll, I'll offer an apology on Janet's part. She is right in the middle of cotton season trying to run a jam.
And I understand, yeah, but, but we, you know, but, you know, we talked and I told her to come by and look and then, but I went and met at her house and, you know, just saw the 200, 200 feet.
Has there been any, uh, post changes after meeting with any neighbors or discussion? So what would be the buffer on 501?
So US 15501, it's still 20-foot setbacks with a 10-foot wide or a deep vegetative screening buffer that is around the rest of the site.
I have a question about that. Back in 2017, NC DOT had a proposal with a four-lane project from Dean to Laurinburg to be commenced in 2030. They have a proposed budget of $210 million. I have not found anything else online other than one newspaper article about that. Have you guys contacted DOT to see if there had been any further discussion about that? Because I would think that would be something that would need to be considered for your offsets.
Of course. We have not yet talked with NC DOT. We typically do that once they're, like, we know that the project is actually gonna happen, we have to go through the, the permitting process to get all of our accessways and everything squarely with them first. So that is definitely something we, we're gonna look into and now that you brought it up, but, you know, we haven't had conversations to this point.
We do have to give DOT permits whenever we go through our process. So as of now, we've, we've looked at the maps that DOT is planning to, to improve. We haven't seen anything on it, so I'll definitely go back and have our folks look at it again. But if there was a, a larger highway, we'd certainly accommodate that.
Yeah, I don't see anything proposed in the DOT website currently. That was a newspaper article that came out.
Was it 2017?
And like I said, 2017.
I remember too.
And be honest with you, I went and tried to find it again the other day and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, okay, that's interesting though. Yeah, we'll see.
Usually you're talking about it and I hadn't heard any.
Wildlife, right ways for movement of wildlife, deer and things like that. I know, Tom, we've had that as brought up in the past before. What about that? How do you address that? I mean, I know we've got wetlands and we've got creeks and stuff that go through. What is a requirement on that? I mean, is, does the state have anything that says, there's no guidelines on that out?
It, no, there aren't. Actually, these companies often that have come here have far more sensitivity about wildlife than you would have the people at Deener or DEQ Express. Now, I don't know what they have on these sites, but these companies tend, tend to be very sensitive.
I will say, so Laurel Crest, it's so compressed, we don't really have a need for it at that site.
Right.
One of the things that we liked about the Scotch Grove site is that there's this natural wildlife corridor along the creek right there. So our understanding is that's primarily where the wildlife travels right now. We build setbacks from that. We can't build, I think it's what, 50?
Thirty, thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Fifty feet, depending on the.
Yeah. Close to it, so we have buffers around that and then they can still travel along that to be able to move on.
Well, you know, we, the, the Laurel Crest site is a lot more straightforward.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest with you, the board has addressed a number of solar projects, Tom, you, you've been involved in, we've seen faces here before. The Scotch Grove site is a little beyond what we're used to seeing. And I don't want to put the board in a position to try to make a decision without having studied all the documentation. And you guys have all, ladies and gentlemen, given us a great deal to look at, discuss, you've given a lot of explanations. What I need to ask the board, what other questions do we have and concerns that we need to address to these folks tonight? And second, does this board feel like it has gotten enough information that we can vote on this tonight? Or would the board prefer to have some time to study all these documents? Karen, you're brand new, this is your first time on this.
Um, and it's, it's so, this is my first time on this. And I would really like to look over the Scotch Grove one. My parents own a residence at the end of Monroe Road, so I would really like to really, really look into and see.
This is a lot of data.
Exactly. You know, looking at the, the setbacks and how much, you know, just how far you're pushing things back and all those things, I think that would be very beneficial.
Jim, I, I know you're calling the board. It, it is possible to push one forward and keep one to look at. And we can give you updated maps on Scotch Grove and things like that.
Right.
That means if that would be helpful to you on Scotch Grove.
Yeah, and we, and we do have to take these two separately.
We've just had more people approach us, I guess, about these than we ever have before. And I think it's.
Concerned with, concerned with, what did they approach you about?
Uh, the size, what's gonna happen, buffers, it being a major highway coming into the county. You know, the county's thought of more of agriculture state than a solar field state. Some of them had concerns that we may be taken advantage of because we are lower population, lower income, flatter ground, a lot more agricultural land available that can be turned into this. They generally benefit them and the owner. This goes really deep with the state and federal level, more state pushing these and wanting these. There's a lot of interest in them and I understand the behind that, but we've got how many people approach you, we're gonna have to dot our i's and cross our t's and look at everything to come up with the best solution.
And I'm just asking the question. I mean, it is a lot of information.
It is.
But if you took the time to read through the packets and see that everything is done up to our coding standards, they have addressed the citizens. And then if we did have citizens that were coming to board members and if they didn't know that we had a meeting tonight, I would presume that those same citizens would have came here to make their concerns known. So that, that, that's just the thing. I mean, it's a lot of information, but I got the packet on Monday. And being a part of the board, I've seen many of these come through. And these two have been one of the finer two solar farms as far as detailed information that this board has ever gotten and ever received. And I'm not saying for or against, but I'm just saying, we have to take the whole totality in aspect when we are addressing situations. And from all of this, they have crossed their t's and dotted their i's. They have went to the citizens, they have met with the citizens, they have pushed things back. And I mean, they're doing everything you think would seem right to make sure that, and I understand what you're, you're saying as far as the flatlands, the economic part of it, benefiting the landowners, I understand all of that. But we have to take everything in, in a whole and in totality. And if they've done everything according to our ordinances, that meets our order, and then they attached our ordinances to their packet to say, hey, this is what your ordinance say, tell me, why not? They've done everything right.
Well, I understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with you, but at the same time, we gotta keep general public safety in mind. And I've had a lot of people come up and approach me and apparently Jim has too, I don't know about others. I just feel like this is such a significant size and where the location is that we just need to make sure we take our time to address all the issues that residents have. I do agree, I would love them to be standing here on me, they may, may not be aware of that. So there's a lot of variables here and it's just one of those things where I would say we don't need to rush into and need to look over and talk and do our due diligence to make sure we come up with the best solution for them, us and the citizens.
But we have the, we have the ordinances to protect the citizens of Scotland County. And if they've done everything to meet the ordinances, then what's our legal right to refuse?
Well, you have, at some point, you know, this, well, the commissioners will make final determination on as to whether they've met the standards. They certainly have presented evidence and you've got some more folks here that may want to speak to it as well.
What part of the safety, and I'm, I'm just asking a question, you know, because you don't ask a question, what part of the safety concern did the citizens have or do we have or do, is there a concern about?
Well, not all of them is educated as we are on these systems and they didn't, some of them may not look at it and understand some of the safety, safety mechanisms from fencing to access to housing affect wildlife, is it gonna affect the wetlands around, the waters? I've had a lot of them express those concerns to me and I just, you know, if we don't do our due diligence here, I just feel like we're gonna get some backlash.
But them same people get in the car every day and turn a car on and drive down the street, right?
Yeah, they do.
With CO2 emissions coming from the car.
Right. But you know, have you ever, it's been a long time, you need to look at things from all different aspects, because sometimes they can paint a picture that may not always be 100% true. And there's also variables that we may not discuss tonight that may come up later. And if any of those who may watch this video in the public may have more concerns that we may need to address. It's not saying we're gonna shoot it down, it's just saying we may need to find a means where it will suit the general public as well them. So kind of happy medium, we say.
All right, what, what I'd like to do, I'd like to ask these folks if they would like to have, I, I'd take 10 minutes, three minutes apiece if we would.
I'll be the only one, but they'll give it an hour, now I'm gonna have five minutes. I'm, I'm, I'm grateful for the five minutes, don't misunderstand what I'm saying.
This, this was simply a presentation, this way up there.
Yeah, this is gonna be simple.
Okay, we're gonna, the 315 minutes, take your time and do what you need to do.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time and the board, for me to have the opportunity to speak. And I would like to address your question kind of indirectly, but also directly. If you don't own property next to the solar farm, you hadn't been notified that there's been a, an application in to change the zoning. So unless you ride down about the highway, you don't see a sign that says public hearing such and such and such and such. So I'm one of the landowners that have reached out to gather more information. So let me introduce myself, my name's Clay Creed, I too am a lifelong resident of Scotland County. My kids are the fourth generation here in this, this county. The property we owned, my grandfather acquired in the 1950s. He was also a charter member here for the fire department, it was Dr. George Creed, very well-known in the community. We have a high priority for our property to be good stewards of our property and own that property. It contains 130-acre Blackwater Lake. And I would like to say, the activities that were ongoing on February 17th, 2021 impacted both my family emotionally and property physically in more ways than you can imagine. The lake that I referenced, known as Creed's Lake, who everybody that's been a relative, been a resident of Scotland County is probably aware of where that's located. Again, is a typical coastal plain, Blackwater Lake. My intention for speaking tonight before the board is not to oppose the solar project or promote any of these solar projects, it's simply to state the, the facts of occurrences that have happened to us personally in Scotland County. And I would encourage the decision-making of this board to consider all aspects that this county has not impacted in a negative way. I've heard everything about how it's not gonna do that. So Scotland County leadership has a duty to the Scotland County residents to do their due diligence, as you mentioned, on any project that is bought before then. And now, if you allow me, I'm gonna pass out some, a packet that I've also prepared that I think will very much reinforce what I'm gonna talk about here. Along with a letter that I also sent to the county commissioners, February 19th, 2021. Sorry for the delay in time, just takes time to get this information out. You may be, you may remember that letter because I copied you on it as well. So just to keep everybody's attention and keep us focused, there's a lot of information in here that, that is factual data that's been provided, that I've obtained through personal file reviews with North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. This isn't made up information, it's there for anybody that would like to view it and it's included throughout this packet. As you open the packet, the first page there is Creed's Lake Incorporated property, which shows Creed's Lake, Blackwater Lake. shows Creed's Lake, Blackwater Lake, the second page shows what it looked like on February seventeenth, twenty twenty one, which I would encourage you to turn to page two. Page three is an onsite picture of what my family's Blackwater Lake looked like, okay? All right. I've explained that, how, you know, to come home to see your family property that was once when you left the house, black and pristine, to having a phone call says, hey, have you been by and looked at, uh, your property today since you left, no, had made a direct line out there, this is what I found, this prompted me to start the process of contacting all the necessary agencies and my county officials, and as you will see, in my mind, I said, how, how did this happen, aren't there laws to predict this, short answers, yes, so the activities that occurred on the property that is managed by Cypress Creek Renewables was, was noted, these activities were in violation of the Sedimentation Pollution Control Act, the National Pollution Discharge and Limitation System for construction activities, and is referenced on the notice of violation letter that I have provided in that packet. It was addressed to Cypress Creek, it was in care of Todd Rouse, who at that time was the project manager, and it's dated March twenty six, twenty twenty one, all the violations are contained in that letter specific to what resulted in the offset, offsite discharge that created this plume and turned my lake from black to the appearance of heavily creamed coffee. I ask you to turn to page ten. You will see the first construction sedimentation stormwater inspection report that was prompted by my phone call to the EPA hotline, to the regional DEQ located in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I don't want to use up my time reading all the violations that have been noted, but those are my handwriting, that's, that's from your North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and it shows, has what sedimentation damage occurred since last inspection, yes, lake natural water courses on the track have been impacted, lake and natural water courses off the track has been impacted, failure to de-water sedimentation basins from the surface, and might I add, all these activities were, were occurring without a proper permit in place, what does that mean, well, the permits have to be in place for DEQ to even know to have any oversight on these activities, they did not know of any of the activities that were being conducted on that property until my phone call. So I provided that information to the county commissioners, and both, and reported it to both state and federal elated officers, all the violations, sedimentation damage, exception, and et cetera, too much the number, too much the list, are all in that, in this packet. What land disturbing activities were occurring that caused the environmental damage to Shu Hill Creek watershed, Creed's Lake, and the downstream ecosystem. What was in place was temporary sedimentation basins that were there during construction in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, they were improperly closed out by DEQ, which the, the report is obtained where there's no self monitoring required with the temporary facilities left in place, we're talking February twenty twenty one, one of the wettest months that we've had, and these folks decided that they're gonna go and fix these sedimentation retention ponds, um, without a permit.
Now, when you say fix, what did they do to fix?
Well, my natural resource consultant, who knows more about the processing of the permitting and how they did it, would be glad to speak, but the short answer, read the report, it shows there weren't proper filtration systems in place for de-watering, and the sedimentation ponds were breached, and the offsite discharge occurred from the sedimentation ponds, basins.
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak?
Yes.
My name is Nash Hardy, I have operated, help Mr. Creed, I, I'll help make it a little more graphic, there are aerial real time photographs of a large fifty, sixty thousand pound excavator cracking the dam open and letting it direct discharge.
On to his property, he shouldn't have nothing to do with site.
There were, I think, nine.
Or more.
Or more, typically, those nine are addressed as singular units in a closeout procedure so that you don't put your entire site at risk, you work on Sector A first, get it buttoned up, tighten up, so if you have a rain event, the other eight sectors are all functioning properly. In this case, Cypress Creek Solar directed the contractor to undertake the entire site at one time with no permit, no oversight, and busted every single, every one of them in its own area photograph, broke all of them open in a period of three days, so there was zero protection to the adjoining properties from the rain that was occurring every three days, in addition to it flowing onto Mr. Creed's property.
When was that permit supposed to have been acquired?
The permit was inadvertently and improperly closed out by an inspection in February of two thousand and nineteen.
By which agency?
By DEQ, they had an inspector said the site was compliant, but did not note that all of the temporary conditions were still in place, which they were, those temporary conditions sat in place until February of twenty twenty one, which that was wrong, they should have been addressed way before then, so Cypress Creek initiated work in the middle of the winter, in the middle of the wettest two months we'd had in two years, and engaged the entire four hundred, five hundred acre site at one time with no land disturbance permit, with no phone call, or, or, how should I say it, they, they didn't notify DEQ, they had no closeout procedure that was mandated, they had no closeout plan to show anybody, and of all the things, there's something called NPDES reporting, which requires you to either hire someone or do it yourself to record the local data, what your stormwater situation is with your ponds, if any corrective actions necessary, every time it rains a certain amount, you're required to record all of that, they had none of that.
Wow, and there was engineers involved?
So, if you'd like to respond.
I'm, I'm good, I, I'm good right now.
And yes, they have what he's talking about, the amount of work.
So pages, so page twelve through sixteen in the packet are the inspection reports dated March fourth, twenty twenty one, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, August twelfth, twenty twenty one, I remind you that the date of the notice of violation letter was dated March twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, this is key, you've got to hear this, is it not concerning that an inspection did not occur between the date of March fourth, twenty twenty one, and May twenty fifth of twenty twenty one, when the notice of violation plainly states compliant deadlines are fifteen days from receipt of the notice of, like, notice of violation, they didn't even go back out there, out of sight, out of mind, this is your state agency, who is the enforcement arm of the Environmental Protection Agency, and I don't want to sit here and ramble on my time from where I've been to Washington to speaking with EPA representatives in the EPA Atlanta office, because I won't talk to somebody in North Carolina, we're operating in the shut side of jurisdiction of the law, we don't, we can't help you outside the permitted boundary, which is not correct, so, but we were told that by the head of the Office in Fayetteville, well, there's nothing we can do for you once it goes beyond the limits of construction, which we know is not correct, but.
I've, I've seen the construction sites, and I've seen DEQ on them, I've seen road control plans, I'm familiar with them, do I know mid- Creed, that I do not, but you push dirt, sediment onto another site, I have seen it, you will get in so much trouble.
Greater than an acre requires permit.
Correct.
Now.
And if nothing's been done, the only thing leaves me to believe is very political.
Yes, sir.
State level to the nth degree, because I have seen them come out there and rip the contractor, you don't do that, and then you put it to a natural water course, impact the neighbor, God, how many yards of dirt could that have been?
And where is it still sitting, on the bottom of my lake?
Yep, so, I mean, highly impacted, and then the state or nobody does anything about it.
Which is water sheds of Scotland County, let me, let me, you, let me say one more thing.
Okay.
The question may come from the board, well, this was all in twenty twenty one, what's this got to do with today and twenty twenty three, well, I will direct you to page seventeen, which is an email from my correspondence with Pamela LaRiley, who is the environmental science scientist enforcement of the enforcement and compliance assurance division of the EPA in Atlanta, this is her response to me, this is the final response that I received on August twenty first, twenty twenty three, after her momentum of gaining information, might I add, she requested all the documents from DEQ that were in that file review that I have right here that I provided to you, needless to say, she got three. From your state agency concerning that site, they emailed her three. When I had her conference call, I looked at her, I asked a question before, because I figured out how deep this goes, are you sure those are the only documents that the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality that's supposed to protect us provided you? Yes, sir, that's it, and I said, well, you know what, there's some discrepancies, even the copy of the notice of violation that you received has a different date than the copy I got straight out of the file, they made the copy.
Registered letter.
Registered letter, okay, so, let me read this.
Y'all were the company, didn't that?
That Cypress Creek, so let me, let me. Good morning, Mr. Creed, I wanted to provide you an update regarding your complaint, I reached out to the state to receive all documentation correspondences for the complaint, and the state informed me of the following, now, this is after I notified her that she didn't have everything, the response, they are working with the financially responsible party towards final stabilization to localize erosion areas, over two years, they're still working on this, and that got it fixed, I'm trying to be calm, but this is my family heritage, this is what I've been trying to protect for my kids in this community where I live, that I have an interest in, that I pay taxes, you know, inspector plans to revisit the site to verify progress, and inspection report will be sent after the inspection, once all these items are received from the state, they will be compiled and transferred to the per, point of contact, Mark Robertson, to address, that I might add, he was the inspector for the EPA that had to deal with the terrible offsite discharge that occurred in Alabama in the Chattahoochee River, which is, look it up, civil suit, Department of Justice, got the letter, I can provide it to the board, I can provide you whatever you want, because this isn't something that I just kind of put together, I've been working on this for two and a half years, just like everybody else has been working on their projects, so, with that being said, if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer, and if there are more technical that I can answer, or more technical questions that I can't answer based on permitting and so forth, and, um, I'm gonna direct them to my resource consultant, and by the way, I am a consultant forester in North and South Carolina, so I, I know about some of these, well, the standards we have to abide by, and I'm just glad that it wasn't me, I'd be in jail, any questions? I got one more thing to say, if there's not any more questions.
Real quick, I didn't intend on just getting this carried away tonight, but, uh.
Well, nobody, no, guess what, there's probably not a four people in the county noted this, why, because Mr. Creed kept his mouth shut till he got all his information.
Okay, what else do you have to say?
This is a public hearing, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming, where the residents of the county can express their concerns, this board has the power to product, impose conditional use on a potential development that without oversight can severely impact our county's environment and residents, does the board have any specific questions, or details beyond what I, if they do, that I provided, I gladly, gladly entertain those at a later date, and, uh, my files is thick, so if anybody wants to meet, they're welcome to come to the offices of ZB Payton Incorporated, and we'll meet, I can show you videos, drawn footage, aerial photography, and one great thing that you'll see in there is I've got the ability with my GIS to be a member of the planet dot com, which I can get daily imagery, I can show you a forty seven acre plume of sediment that's coming downstream, and how it's impacted, and how long it's sat there on the lake, with no contact and no oversight from any of the parties involved, no concern at all, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Creed, um, I will expect it.
If, if I may.
Just, just a second, um, we did ask for citizenry to respond, we were hoping it was gonna be about an individual site, I was not anticipating that we were gonna have a, an informational session about erosion and whatever is involved, so if there is an issue from any one of the members of the board that we have exceeded what we were supposed to do, I don't think we have, it is public information, um, I'm glad to get public input, we don't usually get this much, but having said that, I do think we do need an opportunity for reply, uh, it does sound like that our state agencies may not be as, um, responsive as we need them to be, we need to also consider, is this more of a state agency issue, is it more of a company issue, obviously, we have opinions here about some fault or not, so in this, I think we need to have, and if you can't make it as brief as possible, because.
I want to start off by saying that it happened to your land, and that Chu Creek was absolutely not right, and we're sorry, it was, I know it doesn't do much, but it's since become a study for what not to do, we were working with a consultant and contractor at the time, who we've since cut ties with, and the fact that we, the fact that we were so wrong and made such a mistake is, I know, haunted a lot of the folks in our, in our agency, it's something that we talk about, doesn't make it right, there's not much we can do to make it right, I will say, I don't know, Mr. Creed, if you have the opportunity to talk with folks outside.
Nobody answers the phone, the main office in California is an automated system.
Okay.
I've gone up the chain to the CEO, no response.
It's pushed under a row.
I'm, I'm.
Let me finish the meeting real quick.
So, okay, real quick, I met with Todd Rouse, project engineer, and the firm that you guys had, the environmental firm that you guys had, I say you guys, I refer to Cypress Creek, they came to me, there wasn't a problem, Nash was in that meeting, I won't, I won't contain myself here, I'm gonna let Nash do some speaking, because this is emotionally driven for me, and I want to stay on the facts.
Let me, let me make a suggestion.
I, I just.
I think that it may be better for you and Creed Lake LLC to have a conversation with Cypress.
You, you would be interested in how that conversation went, though.
Well, I, I'm sure we would, but we still have to continue on with the meeting tonight.
Yes, sir.
And this really is, yeah, I appreciate the information more than you know, I think everybody needs to hear that, but I think at this point in time. I think everybody needs to hear that, but I think at this point in time, we've heard that, and you folks need to get together. And, and I, I can't get involved in that. What we have is a commitment here to consider the applications with the information we have.
And Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to present that so you would have all the information to make a, a decision with your recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners moving forward. And to make good decisions, you got to have all the information.
Discussion from the board.
I think it's a lot to take in. I have a little bit of background in because of my profession, and I've been on tons of drop sites. I'm a land surveyor, for those who don't know. I had two years in surveying and civil. I used to work for environmental, civil, and surveying firm years ago. Now, I've been away from that for a long time, just surveying. But I know, but I know enough about road control plans. You don't push dirt on nobody. And to take a temporary structure that's there a couple of years after, that, when a project's finished out, based on erosion control plan, there's certain things that have to be done prior to the end. It sounds like it was done. And I guess it was good that we needed to raise concerns, because apparently, I know these things are very political. I know they're going to happen. I know we got to do what we can to merge the two together and do what's best for the environment and the citizens. And that right there disheartened me, because that would not be a queue many years ago and things. And they didn't do anything. That just tells me how political it'd be. Did, will that happen and then impact them, and then there's no repercussion to anyone else but the one who was impacted? I mean, that's, that's a lot. I had been on acre sites, commercial, little dirt get out the road, something that'd be all over. That is, it's kind of shocking to me, to be honest with you.
And if it helps too, and I know we're on a, a different topic, but we can put together, talk to our operations report. I actually don't think that we were held harmless from it. I, I do believe that we had.
You were.
No.
There were no files.
Okay.
There were no files.
I'll confirm with our legal team. We can get back to y'all, but at the very least, I think the next steps is now you actually heard from people from the company. And again, I'm sorry that no one answered your phone number, but it's, this is definitely in my interest, and I know as soon as we get out of here today, I'm going to have a couple of earfuls of people to talk about what the hell happened in front of French and how do we make it better?
Clearly, they haven't settled anything, y'all have it.
I don't mean, no, sir. I mean, Mr. Johnson, no. No contact, swept under the rug. We did nothing wrong.
And again, I suggest that the two parties get together at some, some point, maybe right after the meeting, and exchange names and addresses.
And I personally like to hear the results of that.
Well, my concern I've got is if, if this product goes on and there are stuff impacted, I'm sure we're going to probably hear about it from residents or anybody driving by, especially when you're talking about workhorses and stuff. So I'm just saying, that may be something we really need to think about. Maybe extra precautions to, you know, because they're going, some people are going to be frustrated with us, depending on what our decision is on what, how it's to be done.
This reflects on us.
If, if I could just add before we close, I know there's a tendency to find a good guy and a bad guy and to use a special use permit to punish somebody for something that is not related to that permit. But the fact is, Scotland County decides solar farms, not by legislative decision, where you can listen to policies and opinions and feelings and emotions, but it's by evidence. And it's by evidence based upon the criteria that are in the ordinance. And we have presented evidence that meets the legal standard of competent material and substantial. And what we heard, and Ms. Miller, I appreciate hearing that. She admitted it was wrong. She apologized, and I think y'all do need to get together. But it's, there is something called materiality, which means relevance. And a passed act unrelated to this special use permit can't be brought in. It's just a lot of cases on that, but I just want to remind them.
Would you take consideration, one of these was prepared for that site too, and apparently it wasn't followed?
Well, you know, we, we can sit here and we can consider, Tom, you were, you, you said exactly what I was getting ready to say. We cannot consider extreme what is. You know, we do have the ordinances for their flaws and their benefits. We have them, we have a land use plan, which in this board's opinion, I will be honest with you, is a crock. It's, it's old as the hills. We asked a year and a half ago to have a new land use plan. That's for us. We don't have what we need yet. The people, and the people that we have doing it, I don't think are doing the job that this county needs for the growth and the future that this county is looking at. Right now, we're the fast food capital of the world. We got more fast food restaurants in Scotland County per capita than just about any place in the United States. But it's growth. We're seeing an increased tax base. We're seeing people come to this county. But we have to abide by, Tom, like you said, the ordinances. Daniel, like you said, the ordinances.
What about the credibility of the artist presenting the information?
I, I don't have any issue with Mr. Creed's credibility.
No, no, I'm talking about the company he's alleging did not comply with what it said it was going to do.
Well, there is.
I don't question his credibility. I'm wondering about.
The credibility of a company is not part of a civil hearing on an evidentiary proceeding. I mean, that's, there is, as I said, there might be a tendency to say they are bad actors. Fact is, if we bring it into this, Cypress Creek can show you hundreds, literally hundreds of facilities that were done 100% correctly.
Well, with that much money involved, you think this situation wouldn't happen if you done hundreds and this all been done? It just, it raises my concern that we really need to pay attention that whatever being said needs to be done. And there being somebody to be held accountable, because you definitely don't need that happening again, but.
We agree with that.
It does. You know, I feel like we got a partial responsibility to make sure that these things do go as planned. Because we are a smaller community, and I'm sure some of us would hear about it.
Mr. Chairman, he, he's had the chance to speak. There was a driver behind all of this. There was, and it's money. Cypress Creek was to engage in a massive $2.6 billion financing in June of 2021. And this was one of the sites.
Let's, let's not get into that, because that's really not something, you know.
It speaks to credibility, sir.
It, it does speak to credibility, but it's not.
Motivation.
We're getting to the point where this type of issue, I think, would be better presented to the county commissioners, because they are the legal authority that have the ability to consider the legal aspects for approval or disapproval for the project to start with. It's our, again, protect the health, safety, and well-being of the citizens. This, these projects have been presented to us, and with disregard, if we take in the ordinances that are presented, if we take in the land use plan that is presented, the other issues, in my opinion, would need to be addressed by the county commissioners. And I think we need to consider everything that was here. But I believe that at this point in time, we need to bring these items up for a vote, one at a time. Do I have other discussion from the board members before we bring these up to a vote?
So you're going to bring it up for a vote, or you're going to table it for us to, I mean, we said you're going to table it to Ford to get more information and look at it, or are you going to bring it up for a vote?
My personal opinion is with the Walcrest property, I think we can vote on that. That's my personal opinion. With the Shoe Hill Creek, I personally would like to have additional time to study the documents. And to allow for additional maps to be presented that we can look at in depth. And I just think that that particular project, the board needs an additional month to consider this if we have to get some special committee together, especially since it is such an an accumulation of various things.
I think both of them really is a lot. I mean, we just got to make sure that we look after what's best for our citizens. But, you, you know, I say these things, they're going to come here and we're not going to agree on it. It's just, we just got to make sure that we do the best we can to research it, make good decisions on if we implement any other conditions for them. I love the idea that they did a bigger buffer for those neighbors over there. That was one of my concerns. I hope they're all happy, because I, I thought that was a pretty good buffer there. That, that's, that's kind of actually surprised me. I didn't think they would give, y'all would be willing to give one that excessive, but I'm glad, but.
I think a recommendation needs to be made to table it. Based upon the information that they presented, then based upon the information he presented, there's no way in your right understanding, you can vote yeah or no, when our mission is to promote the health and safety of our citizens. And then for that to happen to a citizen's property by this company.
What is, it is, is it in the?
I didn't say not, but I said table it.
Yeah.
So that now, so that now, you don't want to make a decision driven and based off of emotions. You want to make a decision driven and based off of facts, information, and everything that's in black and white.
And I feel, I feel that we have some board members that don't feel like we have that information.
I'm one, I'm not voting yeah or no, or you table this.
All right. All right, let's do this. If I'm against our shores, let me know. Yeah, we're going, on the Scotch Grove, the application for a special use permit for Scotch Grove, do I hear a motion that we table this until our next regular meeting?
I make a motion to table it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Or that is tabled until our next meeting. I would like to impose on a couple of members that are interested to have a special committee meeting. And we'll do some additional investigation, not as an open board meeting, but I ask the chairman, do you have the right to call special committees for extra research into this outside of a regular meeting? And we will talk about that later. For the Walcrest seller, do I have a motion we table?
I make a motion to table it.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you being here. I know you're disappointed. But we go back to protect the health, safety, and well-being. And if this board has questions, and we have additional information that we feel like we need to get, we do have to do what we have to do for the county. I know it's not what you want to hear tonight. That doesn't mean we're not going to come back at our next meeting and say, good to go. That just means we do have some questions that we need to answer as a board. And I appreciate your presentation. Good to see you folks that we've seen before, smiling face. I appreciate that. I'm glad we had the opportunity to get these folks possibly together and maybe address the issues that they have. A lot of the issues that were brought up here, I think, also show fallacies in our government system. And sadly, that's part of the problem. That's, that's part of the problem. Yeah, that's part of it. You know, we, we're an imperfect society. People fail. And sadly, some people get hurt with those failures. I hate it. But thank you very much. And our next regular meeting is scheduled for December the 20th. What I'd like to do is propose, because of potential vacation and holiday issues, that we schedule that meeting one week before on December the 30th. Can everybody make that being on December 13th? Good. I can't, I did, I did graduate college. On December 13th. Can everybody check their calendar and see if that's available or not?
I'm out. I'm out, I'm out on 13th.
Daniel?
I'm lucky. I can do the 13th.
Mr. Cleo, can you be here December 13th?
I can be here.
John?
Yeah, I'm Mr. Mulder.
All right. Jim, we will have a call without you. And in the meantime, I will be in contact with your members about issues that we need to have a couple of special committee meetings before our next meeting. And I will be doing that in the next couple of days.
Be more than happy to do it.
Is there any other business before board tonight? If not, do I have a motion?
Can we do the person?
Did you take a vote on changing the meeting date? Because I think you probably didn't do that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Let me advertise that.
Do I have a motion to change our regular meeting date next month, December 13th?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. All right, we will meet on December the 13th this year. I will make the motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you very much.